Hello, welcome to Reality TV. I'm Raymond Bakari. Today I'm joined by Shelley Peterson, who is running for Providence City Council in Ward 14. The current city councilman, David Salvatore, is term limited, opening up the seat for 2022. And the ward itself contains the neighborhoods of Elmhurst and Wanscott. Shelley, how are you today?
I'm well, thanks Ray. Thanks for having me. Thank you for inviting me to do this. How's it going with you?
I'm doing great and it's great to have you on. My first question, it's a general one. Why do you want to be Ward 14's next city councillor?
Oh geez, where do I begin? Alright, so for me, I use my hands a lot, so forgive me. I am running for Ward 14 City Councillor because, and this this cut, this question evolves every single time I knock on the door and I listen to the concerns of my, my neighbors, you know. I'm a mom. I'm a mom first. I'm a mom of two kids. And I, we share in so many similarities where we're, you know, my neighbors and I were all concerned about our raising property taxes and some of our neighbors not being able to afford, I mean, not being able to pay for, find good paying jobs or sustain livable wages and all of these particular things, they start concerning me as a mother, as a, as a person, as a resident of, of the ward. I get genuine, I genuinely get concern for the future of Providence, so I am typically a person that works behind the scenes. I've done a lot of community advocacy, really localized here in Ward 14. And I believe that the opportunity to do this on a larger level is, 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 is a great, is a great opportunity for me. So this is the reason why.
And this is going to be an interesting primary since the incumbent is term limited and you also have two other opponents, Patrick Griffin and Andrew Poyant. What differentiates you from your opponents in this primary?
Let's start with the, with the first and foremost, right? I'm a woman running against two men. And, you know, I, I, what separates me is that I've lived through the injustices that these, my two opponents are trying to fix. So as the only woman of color, I believe that, in this experience, in this lived experience, I believe that this is what, what helps me bring forward a different vision of what to do in this ward.
Looking at some of the top issues facing the city and also some that you plan to prioritize, housing is one of the top ones. If, if elected, you told the Providence Journal that housing is the most pressing issue, hands down. Looking at some of the, what's getting us, what had got us to this point, what do you believe are the main factors contributing to our housing crisis?
So I'm a person, I grew up in public housing. I didn't live in Providence when I first grew up. I grew up in East Providence. But I, I grew up in public housing and understanding what those immediate needs were and I empathize with some of the situations that are currently going on. We have a couple of pub, public housing entities here in our ward and the, the stories of the different things that are happening there are disappointing because it's some of the similar things that I remember hearing from when I was a kid and having to advocate for my parents. But also alarming that we're still dealing with this in, you know, 2022. You know, I, it, that experience alone was what helped me or pushed me forward to start advocating for things like affordable housing. After I became, after I became a parent, I started advocating a little bit more for affordable housing options and really focusing in on immediate needs and resources that people needed within affordable housing. And it led me to sit on the board over at Habitat for Humanity. I think with this conversation of affordable housing and the need to develop and build, I think it's really important to include the conversation of affordable homeownership. Because I think that the reality is, is that we need to be continuing to create more opportunities instead of barriers to have and build generally generational wealth. And equity is very much one of those things. So being able to leave some sort of a legacy for your families is something that is really big and, and, and part of that American dream that we as immigrants come and try and achieve. So particularly here in my ward, one of the big issues is that we are, our residents are worried about the expanding footprint of the colleges and the developers here. And it's happening at alarming rates and it's really concerning because of the displacement. The displacement that people are having here, the fact that people are being rent, priced out in terms of rents because there's an easier, it's easier to be able to house students because everybody's sharing the, the, the rent. And families where it's a single family, you know, a single parent or even just a family not making enough per hour, these are the things that start affecting how, where you can live and how you can live. So these are all really, really important things that as a city councillor, we need to navigate and navigate fairly quickly. There's conversations around rent control and rent stabilization that I'm a huge proponent of. Key concern here in my, in my ward is displacement and that is something that is at the forefront of the conversations that I talk with, with my, with the constituents here.
And there, like you had mentioned in that answer, there are a few approaches that are popular amongst candidates seeking office this year to try and solve the housing crisis. It's going to take more than just one solution, whether it's building more housing, rent stabilization. You talked about displacement, which I, I haven't, I haven't heard as much this election cycle, but it is a big issue, especially in Providence. The colleges are taking up a lot of land, taking it off the tax roll, like not trying to pick on them, but like Brown University and Providence College. Is there a certain policy, certain set of policies you have in mind that could aid that problem?
You know, one of the things that I think is really important is enforcing ordinances that are already there. And creating an opportunity to continue enforcing those, whether it's with codes and standards or pushing on codes and inspection and standards to make sure that they're actually pushing the developers to make sure that when their complaints are being met or had, that they're following up in a timely manner. We often get a conversation, we often have the conversation here of developers not following through and there's a lack of follow-through when a person makes a complaint. So I think starting off small and really making sure that we're enforcing, and these are not small by any means, but enforcing what we have on, on the books is the, is the first step. Thereby, when we do that, we can start having the bigger conversations of what actually needs to happen so that we can control the other pieces that, that are moving parts to this, to this dilemma.
This next one I want to ask about, although it's sort of dated, everyone seemed to have had their own take on it, which is the plans to rehabilitate the Superman Building, which is one of those ideas that are like, hey, we did something with housing, look, we're, we're going to make this progress, but some of, some of those are ideas that, like the Superman Building, when you look into the details, like how affordable are the apartments, apartments and that they're earmarking to be affordable, then it starts to get a little interesting when you talk about it. And when the numbers were being crunched, it was really only affordable for like, say, police officers or people in that ballpark in terms of salary. What were your thoughts on that proposal for the Superman Building?
So I think that great question. So I think that any opportunity to build creates the opportunity for more jobs. And when you build and you develop and you do all of those things, people are be, are being able to take on those jobs and creating livable wages and having opportunities to spend and thereby creating opportunities for generated revenue in the city. I think that the proposal for the Superman Building was with, I, I think it would have been great with a lot more affordable housing opportunity. I'm, I'm of the, the concept that housing for all is something that we need to continue keeping in mind. But mixed income opportunities are really relevant and really important to making sure that we are making, we can keep the communities thriving. So if anybody were to ever come back and say, hey, listen, I know that, you know, the conversation with these luxury developments is, is all around the opportunities that they're getting as well as the opportunities that we're giving. You know, it's important to make sure that we're staying at task and making sure that we're holding people accountable when they're saying we're going to do this and it's, and, and really, really paying attention to to how, how in fact they're doing all of those things. So when they say things like, yeah, we're going to have affordable housing and it's going to be this percentage rate, and it's like, great. So what, what are you doing? What resources are you, are you, are you looking to, to, to capture to make sure that you're making those things affordable? Also, are they, are you utilizing green efforts, environmental sustainability, things that are making these homes a little bit cheaper to live in as well? So all of these things play really important roles in, in, in the development of these opportunities.
Do you see changes in zoning laws having a role in the goal of housing for all?
That's a great question. I think, I think it's a start to the conversation. But there's a lot more that needs to tend to be able to be at play in order to get that to happen.
Moving on to the environment, which is also another crucial topic in Providence politics right now. This one's just a base question I have because this, this is based on current efforts the city is currently doing to make, to, to make the effort to take on climate change, but obviously there's a lot more proposals to go further on it, which is the, for the start, it's the Climate Justice Plan. Do you support that plan the city has?
A hundred and fifty percent. I think it's a really great start to what we need to do to build on, on, on on what we need to fix to help with combat the, the problems. You know, I once a week I go and I teach environmental justice to thirteen to eighteen year olds. And the way that I've been able to assist and, and, and really focus in on what I can do as, as an individual is really focusing in on the work that I did in the parks. You know, I I started my community advocacy really when my son was about two years old in Farnolli Park. And he fell, he fell from a play structure that was, the wood was splinting because it was too old. And he fell four feet down. And he was two years old at the time and it freaked me out to the point where I was like, oh my God, can you imagine how many other people just don't speak up? And that kind of call to action, for lack of a better word, was the opportunity that I needed to really understand just from, from a really grassroots perspective, the importance of what we're doing just at local parks, creating opportunities for tree canopies and making sure that our parks are giving, have shaded areas where the play structures are so that kids can actually enjoy being in the park and have an opportunity to thrive with the local resources that we have. You know, I'm very cognizant of the things that are happening in other wards where we still have the highest asthma rates in the country in our, in wards in the south side. And I think that as an asthma, as a person who developed asthma because I lived in a, in a public housing unit that was really not well taken care of, I understand that need. And the need to want to make sure that we're making really impactful things happen in a quick way, but also understanding that a lot of the communities that we're trying to serve are focused in on so much of the day-to-day and making sure that they're providing basic essential needs to their homes, that they also don't have at the moment the, the opportunity to sit and learn or want to do part, or take part and do better. So really creating an advocacy, an opportunity for advocacy, but education around how important it is to, to focus in on certain environmental barriers or injustices that are happening right in these, these communities and what we can do to combat them is I think a really big step for the communities that we're trying to represent, especially the ones that are often see the, the brunt of, of the effects of what climate changes. But I definitely think that the Climate Action Plan is a great way. It's a great, it's a great start for us, for that pathway.
And many candidates seeking city council seats this year would agree with you that the Climate Justice Plan is a great start. And the dialogue, when you consider things like what the Port of Providence is doing in the south side of the city, is now leading to calls for a city-level Green New Deal, which is similar to what Boston put in in 2021. Is a Green New Deal the route Providence should go in?
I think that we have really great resources here in, actually right in here, right here in Ward 14. We have some really great source, resources that were a part of creating what that Climate Action Plan looks like. And I think that we need to be able to pay attention to the steps that are being taken to make sure that we're, you know, carving, cutting those emissions at, at a fast rate and doing all of those things that we're expecting to do by the deadlines that we're giving ourselves, but also really utilizing the, the, the resources and by the resources, I mean, the people that have worked really hard in combating these issues and working on these issues for so long. Really trusting their judgment and seeing how the preparation for all of this planning that we're doing is actually done in a really educated and, and, and thoughtful way to make sure that we're doing it step by step to get to those deadlines and to get to those Green New Deals and expansive opportunities like that.
And one part that I've heard in a lot of these climate plans, this is more of a state one, but I, I'm interested to ask you since this is a, a issue you're very passionate about, is about the push to phase out gas cars. It's gaining steam recently. Where do you stand on the plans such as, say, having all cars being sold have to be electric by 2035?
I think that that is a great idea as long as it's done in an equitable and affordable way. I think that affordability is a huge issue as we continue to make, make these choices and make these decisions and make these these big claims about what we need to do. We need to be able to be conscientious of the fact that a lot of these options need to be done a hundred and fifty percent right now. But we have to look at all the bigger picture items that are going to affect that. And affordability is one of those things that we need to make sure that we're combating and, and figuring out for, for the people that perhaps don't necessarily have the opportunity to, to take on an electric car at this point in time. Also, I think that having the opportunity for other mobile, other modes of transportation, whether it's bike lanes and having opportunities to do a little bit more transport in different ways is a really great opportunity to combat some of that if we're becoming such more of a localized city.
Now, looking at education, a lot of these topics are so in-depth and we can keep going by. I do want to give you a chance to, give you a chance to give your take on a lot of them because Providence, I mean, there, there's probably like five or six top issues that are all equally as important and education is up there, so.
Take your number of which one's the most important one.
Exactly. And they'll vary depending on what part of the city you're in and who you ask, but looking at education, the big part of the discussion right now is where we are in the state takeover. It's been going on for a couple of years now, but COVID sort of threw things off, so there's talks of, from the commissioner wanting to push it back another two years. Where do you stand on the current state of the state takeover?
I think I think that we can't have a conversation about bringing them back without having a robust plan in place. And I haven't seen or heard anything yet to be able to expand on that, so I would, as a city councillor, really just, I, I'm a preparer, so I like to make sure that I have a plan B, C, D, and E to make sure that if something doesn't go right, we have something else that we can put in place. So for me, having that structured thought and making sure that we're continuing to move no matter the obstacles that are in front of us, it's actually what makes us be in a better position to thrive. So I would love nothing more than to bring these schools back and have us be, and this will be really focused in on making sure to, that we're taking the steps that we're, that we need to. But I just don't, outside of construction and renovation in the schools, which is really, really important. I, I haven't seen anything, so I'm looking, and I, to be quite honest with you, I like, I like the superintendent. I think that he's doing a phenomenal job. I can share with you that there was an issue over here at Kennedy School and I was bringing my kids over to, I was bringing my son to school one day and I saw him outside making sure that he was taking care of the things that were going on outside. And that to me means more as a parent because he's, he's militant about making sure that he's there and present and accountable for the things that are happening with the school. So for me, that's a big stat, that's a big bonus. So I'd love to be able to continue working with the superintendent just because of his, his, his already accountable methods of being able to, to work with this, in the school department.
He's a really great guy, very personable. Most people don't know this because I haven't shared it, but I was actually a student in the school that he was principal of years ago. He was, he was principal of Frank Dispositano. I attended there for grades three through five, very nice guy. I, I have a lot of great, great stories because he was, I remember during the kneecap testing, it was called, before park. He, he would do a lot of great things to, you know, make sure we were prepared for that and it was a really great guy, but you mentioned the, the, what should the plan, you know, making sure we have a solid plan before control goes back to the city. And I'm glad you mentioned that because I know you also said that in the Providence Journal, Journal article where they interviewed all the council candidates. Is there anything in specific you think should be in that plan?
Yeah, you know, I'm a big proponent of, I believe wholeheartedly that education isn't always just in school. I think that we need to be providing resources outside of school. Youth development and youth enrichment is, 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 is really important and it's what I do in my day-to-day. Being able to offset some of the, the issues that we're seeing or the concerns that we have as parents by providing opportunities, not just for after-school activities, but really truly enrichment. So lessons, camps, extra sports, like figuring out how, music, bringing back, you know, things where people, where kids learn and are passionate about things so that they can create their own personal pathways of interest so that they're, you know, succeeding and creating their own little plans of what, what that looks like as they get older. I think these are really huge steps in the right direction. Like I said, it's important for me to, for me, it's, it's probably one of the most important pieces is to make sure that we're creating an infrastructure outside of school as well as inside school, which is the reason why I'm such a big proponent of renovating the parks and making sure that all the parks have, you know, really equitable ways for kids to play and having programming in the parks. It's all the stuff that I did when we renovated Farnolli Park. Making sure that we had some different programming so that kids could just have a place to go. I, I, I am, I really strongly encourage having that opportunity and fight and focusing in on how we do that with so many great organizations that are already here would be really high on my list of priorities to make sure that we did that, to take care of that piece.
And the public schools, that's just one component of education in the city. Another one that it's a bit more of a controversial topic, which is the role charter schools should have in the city. Some will say it's a viable alternative, parents like it. Some will say it takes resources away from public schools. And I know this is kind of a loaded question, but what kind of roles should charter schools have in the city?
I am a firm believer that charter schools should not be taking away from resources from the public. I can tell you that my student, my children do not attend public, so my, my kids attend private school. But I don't believe that charter schools should have any role, any, any takeaway from the public schools because we need to focus in our efforts to making sure that we're giving kids the full opportunity of equity for schools.
This, oh, sorry. This, this, this next question, sometimes there's a delay when, whenever somebody's, if someone's watching, there's a delay sometimes in, on my, on my end when someone's talking. So there's like a pause and then I can't tell. But the one recent bit of news, talk, while we're still talking about education is the plans for a hybrid school committee, half-elected, half-mayor-appointed. Currently, all ten members are appointed by the mayor, no matter who they are, where they're from, the mayor can just pick any ten. But now on the November ballot, see, I, I, I didn't know how I was going to ask this because I didn't know what was going to happen with the council veto yesterday, veto override yesterday, but just to summarize it for those watching, November, the November ballot, there'll be a question for voters in Providence where if they want a hybrid elected school committee, the mayor vetoed the proposal and then yesterday, because, because today we're filming this on Thursday, August 11th, the council overrided that veto with a vote of eleven to three. And this is sort of like the charter schools is dividing people in the city, which it's an interesting conversation to have. And I'm just curious to know, where do, where do you stand on the plans for a hybrid school committee?
I think that while it is a very good, I think we should be having hybrid options. I think that some appointed, some elected are really the way to go. How, how are we ensuring that everybody's concerns and, and opinions are heard and if we're not finding people that were appointed? The way, the, I think that you know, this particular school and, and a hybrid option of an elected position, I think there's a lot of dynamics that play into it that I'm not necessarily sure how they would work. So without really understanding a robust plan of how this person's going to be elected, when it's going to be, how, you know, what areas it's going to be focused in on and really just understanding a full process of how that structure is going to, to play itself out gives me a little bit of hesitation. But ultimately, I think being able to present it on the pal, on the ballot for, for, for folks to decide is, is, is the way to go.
This next one, it's more of a political question, takes a step away from specific issues. You did get the endorsement from outgoing councilman David Salvatore. He's running in quite a bit of an interesting state senate primary himself against Senator Sam Bell in District Five. When I checked, it looked like you are in that district. I'm going to ask, are you going to reciprocate that support and support him in that primary?
Yeah, a hundred percent. David and I, David and I have worked really well together for the better part of twelve years. And even when we don't necessarily have the same opinion on things, I think what makes, what has been so wonderful about working with David is, is that he has dragged my seat to the table to make sure that I was paying atten, I was being paid attention to, my concerns were heard. And we were advocating for the right things and it was, you know, focusing in on so much of the localized things that we were doing, whether it was at Farnolli Park or working with individuals in the programming that Habitat for Humanity does, for instance. We've been able to, we've been able to work well together despite having differences in, in, in how we see things and figuring out how to work within those, right? So I think that that is of any person that you're looking to work with, whether it's at the state level or a city level, that mutual level of, of respect and really just wanting to be with the right thing for the community is really where it comes down and I'm, I'm appreciative of the fact that he's supporting me and I'm absolutely supporting him going forward because I've seen, I've seen the, the work that he's done here as a city councillor.
These next three are shorter form questions. I'm asking every council candidate, do you have a certain committee you would like to be on if elected?
Yes, I do. And I get the name wrong all the time, so please forgive me. It's the Urban Redevelopment Renewal Planning Committee. It's a lot of the work that I've already worked on through the, everything over at Riley Park and the start of the work that they're doing over at General Street. That that would be a really great place for me to go and ordinances, being able to review ordinances.
Which of the mayor candidates do you plan to support next month?
I have no idea. I think all of them have really great qualities and I myself am a constituent in that particular race, so I will make my decision at the, on the, on election day.
And this one might be a bit tricky, so I understand, I'll be totally understanding if you don't have a direct answer for this one yet. Who would you support for council president if you're elected?
There are a lot of really great people that could be in that particular position. I, you know, I've, the wonderful part of being able to run is really having some in-depth conversation with the people that are going to remain on council. And understanding what their vision is for the next four years is something that is really important to me because we need to be able to share in similarities, but also understand our differences so that we can work together to actually get things done. So I've seen and I've heard a lot of different things from, from all of them. And I think that there's some really great candidates, so I'm looking forward to seeing how that plays out and, and giving my full support to, to, to the best one.
And my final question, it's a non-political topic. I like to ask this to everyone at the end to keep the tradition. In your opinion, what do you think Rhode Island is best known for?
Can I tell you that I thought this was the hardest question of all of them?
Really? Well, I mean, it's laughing for a reason.
There's so much. I, you know, our.
You can say more than one if it helps.
Yeah, our beaches are phenomenal. They're beautiful. It's, it's, it's amazing to have so much coastline here that is like four, you don't have to travel super far to go get there. Our restaurants, our education, our, our private schools are, you know, the educational institutions that we have here that bring so many people over to, to, to learn here. All of these are just token pieces of really great things that happen, but I'm going to say that the best thing about Rhode Island is its people. We are so diverse. We are so passionate about all the different things that we bring, whether it's in our careers or as families or as, you know, newly said, it, you know, new transports living here. I really believe it's our people.
That's very true. And I mean, people who've probably seen me add on to the answers to before probably will say, Ray, you sound like a broken record. But we have a lot of diverse communities, especially in Providence too. Liberian, Dominican, Puerto Rican, everything, Italian, Irish, everything. It's, it's a beautiful city and a, and a beautiful state and a great part of the country too. Like the beaches you mentioned, it's, it's really a hidden gem, I like to say. And I, I wish the state would get more recognition. Like the beaches you mentioned, it's, it's really a hidden gem, I like to say. And I, I wish the state would get more recognition instead of being confused for Long Island.
I agree. I agree. You know, there's a big Peruvian population in, in New Jersey. So I'm Peruvian. I was born in Peru. And in this particular population, we would, we would spend a lot of time there because I have a lot of family that lives there personally. And I remember present, you know, like when we were introduced to new people, they'd be like, where are you from? And we'd say Rhode Island. They'd be like, oh, Long Island. No, 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 Rhode Island, completely different.
Every time. And then once you explain it and you say Providence, the next thing is Plunderdome. And it's like, come on, like, you kind of say Water Fire at least, but it's, it's.
Boston, that's the other one that I get, like the one near Boston. Yeah.
Sometimes you get the Family Guy one, though. Sometimes. That's very rare.
Get the laugh. I get, I hear, you know, they do the Peter Griffin.
Oh, yeah. He's actually, the character's based on a security guard that was at RISD when Seth MacFarlane was there. So it just makes it even more funnier.
Want to hear a really funny story about that? That same security guard, when I first bought my house almost twenty years ago, he was selling water filtration systems. And he came to the house and he told me all about it. I, he, I understand, I remember Kevin and I were like, this, this guy looks exactly like, like the guy from Family Guy. And he told us all about it and I'm the water filtration system.
I don't mean to interrupt, but there was a bit of a lag, so I didn't, I didn't catch any of the after-water filtration system. I'm sorry.
No, he's, he used to sell water filtration systems. And he came and sold us a water filtration system when we first moved into this house. And I got to learn all about Seth McFarlane at RISD. And he was a lot, he was a, a fun person to talk to.
That's awesome. And most people don't know this, too, that to connect it just to Rick and then we'll wrap things up because we can have this conversation all day, and I really appreciate this. One of the producers actually went to Rick and he, I don't know if it was a producer or one of the, the drawers or animators, but I gotta double-check the article. We wrote it last year. He went to Rick and he actually worked for the same school paper I'm at now. He worked for the Anchor Newspaper. And he did all the cartoons and comics. So I mean, full circle, full circle moment. Rhode Island's a very small place and
You're editor-in-chief now, right?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I mean, yeah, it's, you know, just one of our many strengths, Rhode Island being a small state. Shelley, I want to thank you so much for coming on the show. It's been an absolute pleasure mine to have you on.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it.
And thank you for watching this episode of Reality TV. If you want to see future episodes as soon as they're posted on this channel, please click the subscribe button down below and the post-notification bell icon to the right of it. I'm Raymond Bakari, and I'll see you on the next episode.